I need to certify now. The Lynchburg City School Board certifies that in the closed meeting just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matter specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting and lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. Need to certify by roll call vote. Okay, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in our public meeting.
Please rise.
Just a second. It's coming. All please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, that brings us to public comments. We do have public comments tonight. Before I call the first person up, I need to read our policy for public comments. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. First up is Mr. John Meadows.
I'm speaking on behalf of a group of seasoned and veteran teachers. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you again about the salary scale and moving forward. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of seasoned and veteran teachers. The first thing I'd like to address is the new 2017-18 salary scale. We did receive a 2% raise, and the raise was appreciated, but it does not address the inequalities of the salary scale. There will always be a case if we continue to provide 2% raises across the board. A 2% increase across the board yields a much more significant raise to an employee of upper levels of the scale and is therefore inherently unequal. Add to that the fact that many employees are making less than they would have in 2009, and we are still not keeping up with the cost of living. I would like to compare some steps from the '08-'09 year to the 17-18 year. You should have a chart in front of you. If you look at step zero, which is a new teacher, the new scale is over $5,500 more than it was in '08-'09. This is a 16% increase. If you look down to step 16, which is a seasoned teacher, the new scale is $501 less than it was in 2008. This is a 1% decrease. Look down at step 26. This is a veteran teacher. The scale is $5,967 less than what someone was making in 2008. This is a 10% decrease. Step 38. Can you believe that we have 38 steps in our salary scale? You have been provided with a chart of salary scales around Virginia. As you see, Lynchburg City Schools expects us to work for a long time to reach the top of the scale when compared to other school systems. Lynchburg City School adds a new step each year, making it unattainable for teachers unless you're already on that level. You can never, and you can cross out 37. We're now at 38. We are almost a decade away from the 2008 salary scale, yet teachers that are on step 12 through step 31 are making less than a teacher from 2008 who was on the same step. As we all know, Lynchburg City Schools is going to be changing over the next few years with a new superintendent coming onboard. I do appreciate what Dr. Braybrand has done for Lynchburg City Schools, but the upcoming changes in leadership, we remain steadfast in our mission to correct the inequities in the salary scale. As board members, we entrust you to be our voice in finding a superintendent that will address and correct the inequities in the salary scale. The process of fixing the salary scale that has been started needs to continue, and the salary scale for the 2018-2019 year must be presented early in the budget process and must address the inequalities. The information about the inequalities in the salary scale is starting to spread. At the last school board meeting, we had a parent who attended the meeting say that it was appalling that this has happened. Another said it was unbelievable that this could happen. Many teachers have made the comment such as, "I didn't know it was that bad," and that the administration does not care about teachers' salaries. The teachers are realizing that we do not have, uh, excuse me, the teachers are realizing that we do have some support from the board members, and we very much appreciate it. But we need each board member to be a voice for the teachers and do not accept a budget until the inequities have been addressed. If you feel that there are not inequities in the salary scale, I challenge you to consider this. When you hire a new superintendent, take the salary scale from 2012, and I wanted to use 2008, but I couldn't find it, but it's about $158,000. Subtract 10%, which is the same percentage that a veteran teacher is making when compared to a teacher from 2008. You will offer the person approximately $142,000. There is no way that you will make that offer, yet we are still willing to pay our teachers at that 10% decrease. Board members, we need you to be our voice for next year. Thank you.
Next is Reece Chandler.
I am a spokesperson for the Lynchburg chapter of Virginia Organizers, a group of mothers, fathers, grandparents, and community members who are deeply concerned about the disciplinary system in our Lynchburg City Schools. Quite simply, this system is broken, and sadly, it follows along color lines. During the 2015-2016 school year, black students represented 48% of the high school population and 74% of the total suspension, 211 of 286 suspensions. At the middle school level that year, our black students were 51% of the population, but 75% of the suspensions, 247 of 328. Nationally, in the Lynchburg specifically, our students of color are suspended at much higher rates than their white classmates. Now, our position is not that students who violate codes of conduct should not be punished, but that punishment should be given out equally. It is not equal when a white student caught running in the hallway is told to calm down and return to the classroom, but a black student caught running in the hall is given a suspension. There is disparity when a white student caught talking in class is asked to stand in the corner of the classroom for a few minutes while the black student caught talking is sent to the office with a referral. This imbalance, this disparity must end. Each and every one of our children in the Lynchburg City School System, regardless of race or gender or socioeconomic status, deserves to be treated equally, and equally and specifically in the area of behavior. Throughout the middle school, my daughter received frequent referrals and would call me feeling frustrated and confused. Luckily, I have a flexible work schedule and was able to hurry to her school and to advocate for her to help remove the unjust punishment. On many occasions, I was able to point out confusing information on her referral and keep her in school instead of getting a suspension. Eventually, my wife and I sat down with her principal and teachers and talked about the way my daughter was being treated. Since that conversation at the beginning of the school year, my daughter only received a few referrals. We are thrilled things have improved for her, but worry about students whose parents and families, who for whatever reason, aren't able to advocate for them. That is why we have to create a systemic change to improve our discipline process. Kids are getting kicked out of their classrooms for days at a time. They are failing, falling behind, and are losing interest in school. This school suspension problem is urgent and is dramatically affecting the lives of our students of color. Before we can find ways to fix this broken discipline system, we have to at least have access to our school board. We are here to ask our school board members to meet with us, to discuss this problem, and to move forward towards action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carl Ouse.
Distinguished members of the school board, just to refresh everyone's memories, my name is Carl Ouse, and I am the president of the Lynchburg Education Association, and I want to start by thanking each of you for your service to the board and express what a pleasure it has been to work with you all over the course of the year to help to continue to strengthen public education in the city of Lynchburg. Also, let me take this time to thank Dr. Braybrand for his years of service to Lynchburg City Schools and thank him too for the opportunity to work with his amazing children at Dunbar. Finally, on this 73rd anniversary of D-Day, let me thank the fine servicemen and servicewomen who have served in our military throughout this great nation's history. Nearly a month removed from National Teacher Appreciation Day, let me say that the association recognizes that Lynchburg is one of the only few localities that upheld the governor's promise of a 2% pay raise for all employees and 4% for our support personnel. We also recognize your efforts to push that even farther for the 2017-2018 school year with an additional 1% for teachers and another 4% for ESPs in the proposed budget, though the city saw things differently. LCS has opened a new high school and continue to provide more new technologies for our classrooms. We have dealt with our volunteer programs to allow more access to community members. In short, we've made progress this year. But as you've heard at recent board meetings and heard here again tonight, we still have a great deal of work in front of us. There is still a need for us to do more for our employees. The need is in the promise that the pay scale freeze of 10 years ago was just temporary. The need is in the apples-to-apples comparison of Lynchburg City Schools to 14 other schools with a similar student makeup, and seeing that we are number two in math improvement and number one in reading improvement over the last school year in that comparison, but we lag far behind those schools in employee compensation. The need is in the task of having to choose new leadership for our division. This is a need in which the Lynchburg Education Association stands ready to lend a helping hand, as the voices of the staff must be heard. Promises have been made, goals have been set, and it is imperative that the new leadership for Lynchburg City Schools understand that and be willing to move forward together. The need is also in the lives of our employees, of the wandas who have to choose between paying car insurance so she can get to work or buying groceries for herself and her children on a teacher assistant salary. The need is in the Amys, who though she's been teaching in Lynchburg for 20 years and has no children, still struggles mightily to pay the bills when her husband loses his job. And yes, the need is in the Carls, who work with sports, drive buses, lead departments, and still has to run his own business on the side just to provide a middle-class living experience for his children. There are dozens, no hundreds, of stories like this across the division. So to paraphrase my distinguished colleague, Aaron Reed, who put it so eloquently when addressing city council in May, "Amid the flurry of numbers and figures and graphs and decimal point-specific debates about money, let us always remember the human perspective." Yes, we have much to celebrate in the work done by this board this year, but there is still much left to do. And as we begin to look ahead to the budget that we will create for the 2017-2018 school year and 2018-2019 school year, we need to keep these three letters in mind: S-O-S, staff over stuff. Let us begin now to develop a budget that acknowledges the new buildings, the new fields, the new Chromebooks and desks. None of it matters without the best staff in place to serve the needs of Lynchburg students. It is the staff that will push them to create a new way to solve a problem in technology. It is the staff that will provide clarification on a word problem in math. It is the staff that will love Lynchburg's children like their own each and every day of the year. S-O-S, staff over stuff. That must be our goal for the next budget. Thank you.
So that brings us to agenda item C, special presentations. We have a slew of student recognitions. It's that time of year. Dr. Braybrand?
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Well, the end of the year of the school year is upon us, and so tonight, we are going to wrap up with some of the top celebrations of Lynchburg City Schools and our students, and I'm delighted to start with student recognition around our summer residential governor schools and foreign language academies. These academies provide selected students with intensive educational experiences in visual and performing arts, mathematics, science, and technology in world languages. Students will live in a college/university campus for up to four weeks this summer, being involved in classroom activities, lab work, field studies, research, projects, and performances. Students selected for foreign language academies will experience full immersion in the language from everyday activities to classroom discussions to field trips. All of the students will gain valuable experiences and skills from practicing professors and professionals in their chosen field of study. These students are to be committed for the hard work. Congratulations to the students on being accepted to these distinguished programs. I'm going to call all of them up. If you are here, please come up and receive a certificate from me, and then stay here in the horseshoe for a picture and greetings and congratulations from the school board. First, for visual and performing arts, Governor's School, Ella Legg from Heritage High School and Asia Miller from EC Glass. The French Academy, well, congratulations. Stay right here. The French Academy, we have Regan McDaniel and Margaret Gladot, both EC Glass.
I'm Regan. I'm Regan.
Oh, she said Regan. Okay, I'm sorry. For the German Academy, Macy Brandon, EC Glass, Grace Chun, Heritage High, and Frederick Congratulations. Grace, congratulations to you. And finally, for mathematics, science, and technology, Ayun Kim, Heritage High School. Again, this is one of the highest honors our students can receive. Again, a big round of applause for their accomplishment. If you guys will come into the center of the horseshoe, just come over a little bit this way and make a, and have your picture with the board.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta be in this.
Congratulations. If you could say, say congratulations. Next, we have student recognition for Citizens for a Clean Lynchburg, Heritage High School, and the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. The mission of students of Citizens for a Clean Lynchburg is to educate the community about solid waste management issues and help instill in Lynchburg citizens a sense of individual responsibility for keeping the community safer, cleaner, and more beautiful. Members of the Citizens for a Clean Lynchburg contacted teachers at Heritage High and Dunbar Middle School and proposed a project that would help students inform the public about this mission, conserving resources, protecting the environment through reduce, reuse, and recycle. The project would be to create a calendar using student artwork that would reflect themes such as litter education, composting, clean water, proper disposal of tires, rain barrels, just to name a few. The schools would then select six entries for each theme and submit them to CCL for judging. Thirteen pieces of artwork would be selected to create the calendar for 17-18, one for the cover, and one for each month. Students whose artwork is chosen will be recognized at tonight's school board meeting, and each school board member, I believe, has received a copy of the calendar, and I believe Ms. Webb is here to have some comments around this.
I am, and thank you for having us, but I don't have anything to say now. You have said it all. I had it all down. But I would like to recognize the art teachers who worked so well with us tonight, and if they have any students here, and they will share with you how they implemented this project, and I hope you will agree after you have a chance to look at it, that it's just an excellent example of the talent that we have here in Lynchburg, and I'm sure these young people will continue to further their artistic ability.
Do we have any of those students or teachers with us this evening?
We have the teachers, yes. I understand some of the students are with exams.
We have some teachers here. The teachers, we come on.
Yes, John Rourke is here from Heritage and Rachel Shaw from.
I can't really say much about this. I was out having a hip replacement, but as a sign of the foresight of this board to hire a second art teacher at Heritage, we recovered. Mrs. Glaze did a great job with their kids, and they took care of the art. And when I got back, all I had to do was kind of run around and push people to get it finished, so.
I have a lot of kids at Dunbar that are always looking for extra projects to do, and this was a great opportunity for them. And I just, I hunted down a handful of kids that I know are always just looking for more things to do, and I presented them the information that Phyllis gave us and some of the topics that she wanted the calendar to cover, and I let them pick and design it themselves, and I was really proud of them, and they were really excited to see the calendars.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I will add one thing. Next fall, each of the students at both Dunbar Middle School and Heritage High School, along with all the teachers and staff, will each get a copy of the calendar as well. And also, as a special incentive, or thank you, I guess, each of the students whose artwork is featured also receives a Kindle, and so we're proud of that as well.
All right, very nice. Thank you. Next, we have the 24 game challenge. This is an annual occurrence at Lynchburg City Schools. It occurred April 24, 2017, at Linkhorn Middle School. Students from all around Lynchburg City Schools, elementary schools competed against each other in a series of challenges to determine the grand champion 24-game player for the entire division. This program helps sharpen basic math skills such as computation, problem-solving, number sense, critical thinking, and pattern sensing using mental math strategies. One of the goals of the game is to be able to use these strategies faster than your opponent, but my belief is the great goal is to have our young people fall in love with mathematics at an early age and continue that love through their life. The winners of the 24 game are as follows. First and fourth place from the Go Center, Lexi Finley. Congratulations. Just stay up here. Third place goes to Liam Lojas. Second place goes to Drew Barnett. And first place goes to Aaron Jote. Congratulations. Let's give these young folks a big round of applause. I want to know one final comment. All these young people tonight are actually from R.S. Payne's Go Center, and many of you know that last year, we actually did the 24 game with the school board. Based on my evaluation feedback, I did not bring the 24 game this year for the school board to do with the students, but we're really proud of them, and again, congratulations on a job well done. The next is our regional science fair winners. Central Virginia Regional Science Fair occurred May 9th, was hosted at Randolph College. There were 71, 71 sixth-through-eighth grade students who were local school winners and advanced to the regional event. The following were nominated to compete at the national level for the Broadcom Masters Competition through the Society of Science and the Public, and we have Grayson Arnold You know, you hang tight, and I'll find that. I wonder why that isn't listed there. Jack Pitts from Paul Lawrence Dunbar. And Kay Stierski from Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. It says science fair. You know what? You must be getting plaques, and I will work on planning those. Let's give these young people, stay right here, a big round of applause. Thank you. Congratulations. You know what? Here they are. Ms. Bab's gonna shoot me.
They're gonna come back up for.
Okay, that's right. We also have some special awards for excellence in communication. Ryan White from Paul Lawrence Dunbar. Ryan? For the National Biology Teachers Award, Kay Stierski from Paul Lawrence Dunbar.
Kai?
Kai? Kai? Congratulations. Stay up here. Naval Awards, Dylan Mayang from Linkhorn Middle School. The Virginia Dental Awards, Jack Pitts from Paul Lawrence Dunbar. Jack wasn't here earlier. Kai, you won again the Virginia Dental Awards, and you're joined also by Margaret Townsend from Linkhorn Middle School. And then we had, Margaret was also a category winner in chemistry. She got third place. In engineering, we had Dylan and Melanie, both from Linkhorn Middle, get second and third place respectively in engineering. Are they here? Environmental science, we had Grayson Arnold, Lilly Jablowski, and Maya Lewis, first, second, and third in environmental sciences. Grayson? What's your first name? I just said that. I just said that. Oh, there you go. Invertebrate zoology, Kai, you took first place. Congratulations to you again. Physics was second place, Jack Pitts, and planet sciences, Annie Townsend and Justin Wingfield, second and third place. Justin, congratulations, buddy. Let's give these young people a great, big round of applause. Thank you. We're almost at the end of special presentations. We have regional young writer winners tonight. Lynchburg City Schools had 12 students in grades one through 12 place first in the regional young writers competition, which is sponsored by the Piedmont Area Reading Council. These students will honor an award celebration at Lynchburg College on May 12th, and the winners are as follow. I'm gonna call all of the names and then ask everybody to come up and receive their certificates. From Bedford Hills, Abigail Wheeler in grade one in dictated poetry. From RS Payne, Adelya Prophet in grade three for fiction. Aurelia Corontonto in grade three for poetry. And Georgie Winnick in grade five for poetry. At Sheffield, we had Sadie Hegeman, grade one for poetry. Linkhorn Middle School, Jack Lloyd, sixth grade for essay. Sandusky Middle School, Anna Gonzalez, grade eight for poetry. EC Glass, Hal Creasy, grade 11 for poetry. Mary Guthrie, grade 12 for essay. Lisa Stewart, grade 10 for poetry. And Heritage High, we had Mariana Davis, grade six for fiction. And Trinity Fitch, grade six for poetry.
Grade nine.
Grade nine. Why did I say grade six? They're in high school. So let's give all these young people a big round of applause. Now, let's make sure I get the names. Yes? Uh, one more picture.
Yeah, I can see my daughter.
Ms. Wheeler, was Ms. Wheeler here? Adely, Ms. Prophet? Aurelia? Okay. Georgie? Oh, I thought you had Sadie. Congratulations to you. Jack? Congratulations, buddy. Anna? Congratulations. Hal, is Hal here? Mary? Your book was amazing.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Leah? Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Leah, Leah, can I see that certificate?
That's serious.
That's not yours. And Mariana? Congratulations to you.
That's a higher grade. So you've got too many of these.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah. What's that? Finally, I have one more thing to share that's not around awards, but it's around one of our amazing programs, Capstone. We were the second school in the Commonwealth of Virginia to begin the AP Capstone program. It is an innovative diploma program from the college board that equips students with independent research, collaborative teamwork, and communication skills increasingly valued by colleges. And as I shared earlier with the newspaper last week, last year's acceptance rate at the University of Virginia for Lynchburg City Schools was 67%, and for Virginia Tech, 73%. And they love seeing AP programs like this on a student's transcript. These programs are designed to complement and enhance in-depth, discipline-specific study experience in other AP courses. We're gonna give you a snippet tonight of the kind of work that students have done as they presented their thesis defenses as part of their AP Capstone project. Mr. Reed?
Good evening. For those of you who have, who don't know me, my name is Aaron Reed, and I am the AP Capstone teacher at EC Glass. And two years ago, this board made an investment in us bringing this program on board, and what I would like to do tonight is, in a very brief sense, give you a sense of what I have been able to see over the past two years with these students. And so AP Research is, seminar and research together are the skills and the building blocks that these students use when they go to college to do what you and I think of as research. And when I talked to my kids at the beginning of last year, I said, "Capstone is the college board's response to our current teenage belief that research involves asking Siri a question." And whatever Siri's answer is, that's the research that I have done. And so, over the past two years, the students who have been in Capstone have had the ability to pursue topics of their own choice, to go in directions of their own desire, and as the teacher of that course, it's been illuminating to me to watch them at work. And there have been easier days than others, certainly, but this year in particular, the students in AP Research had to write a 5,000-word research paper and submit that to the college board. This is not a typical AP program because there was not a test at the end of it. There was a 5,000-word paper that they submitted on April 30th, and then they had to present, they had to have a panel of three individuals. Some of you were panelists for me, and I thank you for that, and they had to present their research. And so tonight, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna bring two students up. I've chosen two out of my class to give you a very brief, I'm not gonna walk you through the whole 20-minute bit of their research, but a very brief kind of snippet from both of these. And they, I think these two students personify exactly what Capstone is about, and so I'm gonna turn this over to them. Ellie Stevens is gonna come up first and give her research presentation, and after
Hello. My name is Ellie Stevens, and my research topic this year focused on Down Syndrome in education and finding the most effective forms of teaching for students with Down Syndrome. Through my research, I aim to fill the gap between having special education programs and actually administering the best form of education to these students. My background research focused on specific methods of teaching, such as counting on, which you can see there, and it's been a proven way that has helped students with Down Syndrome count easier. I also looked at a specific method of teaching called inclusion, which allows students with disabilities in specialized programs to be integrated in more generalized curriculums. This led me to my final question, not just that background research, I did much more, but with the limited time, I just wanted to focus on that, which is, how can special education departments implement methods of teaching that are more effective for students with Down Syndrome? What I expected to find going into this research was that students with Down Syndrome have different curriculum and subject content based on their education level or age, such that students who are younger are focused more on academics rather than the functional life skills that come more prevalent at an older age. As you can see, my methodology was both a survey administered to teachers throughout Lynchburg City Schools who work in special education departments, and also observations both at an elementary school and a high school within the school system. Some of the data showed here from my survey question showed that the teachers who responded said 50% of their students participate in both academic and functional life skill curriculum, and a very small portion of students were just in primarily academic subjects. And also, the second question showed that 83% of their students interacted outside of their special education department daily. The next question focused on the activities that their students participated in on a daily basis, and as you can see, math, English, functional life skills, and group activities were all prevalent in their daily activities, and I believe this to be a reason why, because not only does this relate and help you in the classroom, but it's gonna help the students outside of the classroom as well. I observed at a high school and elementary school each for two hours, and from what I saw, I learned that visual aids, hands-on learning, and one-on-one instruction were very effective in reaching the students. I also, some of the topics I learned was, that they taught was grammar, such as capitalization, punctuation, and fixing errors in sentences. The base of the lesson was not just academic, but it was also to help the students understand the real-life implications of using proper grammar. A specific form of teaching that showed significant effectiveness with one of the students at the elementary school was called touch math, similar to a method of counting I found in my background research called counting on. In conclusion, what I found through my research was that there are prevalent traces of academic and functional life skills at all ages and grade levels. The observation showed me that the academic lessons were taught in order to relate them to real-life situations and examples, and the survey showed me that most teachers using both academic and functional life skill materials in their personal classrooms. But what I learned most of all from this research was that although there are significant trends in that special education learning curve, there can always be exceptions based on a student's individual needs and abilities. As for further research, I would want to look at the needs and abilities of individual students when deciding how to implement their personal education path, rather than assuming that they can follow a common trend. Thank you.
My name is Connor McLean, and I did my research on Supreme Court compliance as it relates to religion within public schools. So I started off by wanting to look at something related to school, something that was prevalent to me, and I identified as religion as something that's somewhat controversial within high schools. So I wanted to take that and run with it as a research question, and that brought me to Supreme Court compliance. Now, what is court compliance? It's simply the ability of the Supreme Court to interpret public opinion and act in agreement with that opinion. This is important because society adapts over time and it changes, and thus, the Supreme Court has to adapt and change with society, otherwise, we would have a very different legal system. And all this brought me to my question of, has the Supreme Court complied with public opinion on the issue of religion within public schools? So, I started off doing my research by looking at essentially court decisions, majority court opinions from various legal cases related to this area. And what I did is use the MPQA Subjectivity Lexicon developed by researchers at the University of Pittsburgh to do a phrase-level sentiment analysis of whether the opinions of the court were in favor of or against religion. I then admitted a survey in EC Glass that essentially asked students whether they agreed with the court opinion in each of these cases. Now, there's a lot of data here, but the key thing to notice is that the four cases highlighted in gray, those are the cases in which the public and the Supreme Court actually disagreed. I was also able to track trends over time, the first of which being public opinion. What I did was plotted the plots that were in favor of religion on the positive axis, and those against religion on the negative axis. And over time, as we can see, the public opinion has actually gone in favor of religion having somewhat of a greater presence within public schools, as opposed to phasing it out of public schools. We can also look at this same thing with the Supreme Court, but first, we have to look at subjectivity. How much of each case and how much of each opinion was left to the Supreme Court's opinion of their own, and how much of it was concrete legal code that they couldn't interpret or change based on their opinion? And we look, when we look at the subjectivity over time, we actually see that this as well has increased. Aside from two cases in the 1980s and 1990s, overall, we have seen an increase in subjectivity for the Supreme Court, meaning that their opinion is playing a greater role in what they decide in these cases. And then when we looked at prior polarity, this being identified by the Subjectivity Lexicon, essentially, whether the Supreme Court is in favor of or against religion, we do see that the Supreme Court has steadily gone against religion having a presence in schools. And with the exception of one case in the 1980s that was extremely low, we see that they have stayed close to neutral in all cases. What I essentially identified were two major trends that we can use to further apply the study. First, the Supreme Court generally favors secularization of student life and activities. We see this through Lee versus Wiseman, a case that was trying to determine whether it should be allowed to have clergy speak at school graduations, and Santa Fe Independent School District v. Doe, which is essentially about prayer at football games. We saw a high subjectivity coefficient for cases relating to student life, including these two. What this meant is, it was widely left to the Supreme Court's opinion, and they disagreed with the public in these cases and were in favor of secularization of student life. Second trend was that the American public is generally warm towards religion in schools as long as it's not trying to superimpose itself over secular beliefs. So when we look at the landmark case for this issue, Engel v. Vitale, we see that it was a case in which a Christian prayer was led by teachers each morning in schools in New York, and this was actually, the court ruled against this, and the public that was surveyed ruled against this because they believed that the certain religion, in this case Christianity, was attempting to superimpose itself over any other belief. We also saw this with Epperson v. Arkansas, a case in which the state of Arkansas tried to pass a law which would ban the teaching of evolution in schools, and this actually had an extremely high majority opinion of those surveyed, with almost 80% of students disagreeing with them being allowed to pass this law, and the Supreme Court disagreed with it as well. My conclusions are essentially that the findings lend themselves to something against full compliance. The fact that four of 11 cases were disagreed upon by the court and the public shows that there isn't full compliance and that the court doesn't always adapt and change with the public's opinion. Trends show that the public favors religion, contrast those showing that the court favors secularization, and thus, we can predict that in the future, compliance will lessen with time as the court tends to move closer to secularization and the public moves closer to religion. Thank you.
This program will be, is it starting in Heritage this coming school year? No, was it Heritage and at Glass this year, but it was just the first year Heritage this year. Mr. Reed completed the second year. This was the Capstone project, correct?
Yes, yes, yes. And one of the things I forgot to mention, and I apologize, because I'm not here to take more of your time. I'm not sure where Mr. Matthews went. Tim Matthews is my co-teacher in Capstone. One of the things that makes this program so powerful is that these kids, they had to deal with me for two years. So I was their seminar teacher, and then they followed me up to be their research teacher. And I'm not sure that I would have gotten what you saw tonight, I'm not sure I would have gotten that from them had I only known them for one year. I think the ability for that two-year program makes it really powerful. So Mr. Matthews, who's our government teacher, currently has the juniors, they will follow him up next year to become that research class, and then I will fall back down to grab the seminar class. And that, that cycle, from what I can tell so far, is a really powerful one. So you saw a little bit of that tonight, and I think that that's, that's very good stuff.
Very good.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, that brings us to item D. Item D, the finance report. Mr. Buckles?
Good evening. Years before, I had a financial report for eight months ending, no, 10 months ending April 3rd. From a revenue perspective, and sales tax, at this point, will be collected up to, I guess, this week. It's pretty much on trend that we will receive almost all of the data we would get. Voice comes to voice, we're projecting it will only be about 40,000 off of what we originally saved. That is not an amount that I'm concerned about, but pretty much, I think, we will see it off of our sales fat. That being said, there are no concerns I have with the other revenue lines as to whether or not you'll get, you'll come pretty much close on budget or what we expect it to be. From the expense side, you will note on your expense report that you'll see still accounts that have negatives. If you recall that you did approve the budget reallocation last month, these are for April, so they'll go away when you see the next May report. And I would say that medical plans are still high. We're just waiting, I will get the May amount next Monday. We'll deal with it however it comes, I just want you to note, still high. At this point, I'm not, I'm not, from a budgetary perspective, I'm not concerned about it having a huge negative effect on our budget, but we're planning for it. a huge negative effect on our budget, could be a plan for it. So from that perspective, I'm not concerned about it. I just want to keep it before the board as we deal with other situations. I'm still, at this point, forecasting that we're gonna have to address insurance rates for next year. Just want to keep that out there. I know we don't want to think about it, but I just want you to be aware that I am forecasting that that's gonna be something we have to deal with coming forward. Other than those items, there are no major expense items that we need to bring to your attention as far as this report is concerned.
Okay, any boardroom questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckles. Move on to the agenda, item E, the consent agenda. It consists of the school board meeting minutes for May 16th, personnel report, and addenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We can approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda is approved. Dr. Coleman, or Braybrand?
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. It is my pleasure to share this evening with you that the Lynchburg City School Board has approved my recommendation to hire Ms. Kelly Baldwin as the new principal for RS Payne Elementary School. Ms. Baldwin has been the assistant principal at Heritage Elementary School since 2015. Prior to joining Lynchburg City Schools, she worked as a teacher at Otter River Elementary School in Bedford County and Appomattox Primary School in Appomattox. As an LCS administrator, she's gained valuable leadership while she actively engaged the school community. She participated in the LCS Aspiring Administrator Program, and she led the school improvement team at Heritage Elementary School. Her energy and enthusiasm has made her an exceptional leader at Heritage. She generally cares about her students and staff, she builds strong relationships, and I am confident she will serve her new school family well at RS Payne Elementary School. Ms. Baldwin's currently pursuing her Doctorate of Education and Leadership Studies at Lynchburg College. She received an education leadership degree in 2014 from Liberty University and a master's degree in education from the University of Phoenix in 2006. She received her bachelor's degree with teacher licensure from Liberty in 2002. I want to welcome Ms. Baldwin as the new principal at RS Payne.
Good, thank you. Now, that's a big deal for that school. So now we move on to item F, student representative comments. Ms. Page, is it your turn? Okay, Ms. Page, take it away.
It will always be a great day in the orange country as I leave my high school. I'm very sad to be going. Congratulations to Julia Finley, who received the Ronald B. Dolan Citizenship Award Scholarship. Chorus. Ms. Elliott participated in her last chorus concert on May 18th. It was also the last chorus concert of the year. We will dearly miss her. A trip to DC. Government students were given the opportunity to tour Washington DC on May 25th. We visited the various museums and historical monuments. JROTC awards. The annual JROTC awards were held on May 25th as well. Congratulations to all of our cadets. Orchestra, no picture, I'm sorry. Our orchestra held its last concert on May 30th and was followed by a reception. Mr. Todes Pittis. Heritage is mourn the loss of a past math teacher, Mr. Todes Pittis. Nursing. Congratulations to the nursing students from both EC Glass and Heritage High School on completing their program as of May 31st. Hall of Fame. On Wednesday, May 31st, Heritage held its Hall of Fame induction. Inductees include Keith Scruggs, longtime baseball coach, Dan Stevens, longtime basketball coach, Frisco Sandage, all-state basketball player, and JT Morris, all-state running back. Band concert. The last and final band concert of the year, of the school year, and the last concert under the direction of Mr. Mike Ham was held on Thursday, June 1st. We will also miss him. Signing day. We would like to congratulate the six seniors who signed with their respective colleges and universities on June 1st. These seniors include Gabby Cordazi, Walden Thorpe, Zian Gressman, Samara Hunting, Julian Douglas, and Anthony Wilson. Senior Day. Senior Day occurred on June 2nd. A special breakfast was served for our seniors in the morning, followed by senior awards, and the day ended with lunch and relaxation at Vista Acres Pool. Mr. Beatty showed up and tanned a ball into the pool, which was very unexpected but amazing. State track meet. Heritage sent several students to the state track meet on June 2nd. Freshman Tatiana Graham came home with 3/8 state high jump champion. Baccalaureate. Heritage held its baccalaureate service on June 4th. We are one step closer to graduation. I was bundling graduation tickets today. Stock market visit. Congressman Bob Goodlatte finished, visited Heritage to meet with the stock market team who won the state championship. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to be the student rep for Heritage and for your service to the Lynchburg City Schools, and I would like to special thank you to Dr. Braybrand for your years of service. We will miss you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
What's going on in class, Ms. Marshall?
Oh, a lot, a lot of things happening. Our hilltopper of the week for the week of May 15th is Tyler Zing, and he currently runs the AIA in the cost code. He was nominated because he is so helpful when working with students who need that extra push. Our hilltopper of the week for the week of May 22nd was Ms. Elizabeth Mason Cup, and she's the athletic director. She was nominated because every day brings two challenges, both positive and negative, but whatever the case she works through, with every crisis, she seems to create the best solution. Our final hilltopper of the week for 2016, 2017 was Michelle B. Wamboldt, and she's our math teacher. She was nominated because she embodies the mentality of leadership and has a very logical approach when it comes to what will happen with our students succeeding. And she enjoyed being able to work with a diverse group of students and to be a part of so many school activities at EC Glass. And Wonder Woman, Cat Phillips, and Lauren Doshian have prepared their students, and they are ready to rock their Earth Science S.O.L. And they did rock the Earth Science S.O.L. And the math department created a spirited week for, to help students get ready for the S.O.L.s, and that was their floaty day. It was really fun. The Lynchburg Regional Governance STEM Academy held its senior recognition awards on Tuesday, May 16th. Matthew Frye, Joseph Henderson, Mitch McMahon, and Ben Sasser were recognized for successfully completing the two-year program at CBCC. Mitch McMahon received the award of Most Improved Student, and Joey Henderson was named STEM Student of the Year. The class of 2017 celebrated senior awards and signing day on Tuesday, May 30th, to recognize all decisions to pursue college and technical plans after Glass. We raised over $10 million in scholarships, and we're proud of all our graduating hilltoppers. Shout-out to the members of the football team for giving back to the community. They participated on May 19th in the annual Jubilee Family Development Center Title Four, sponsored by the Bank of the James, and this event helps benefit the children of the Jubilee Center. And congratulations to our top honors recipients for the last nine weeks. There were 214 students who received a top honors this year. And what happens when the entire class passes the Architecture NOCTI certification? Mrs. Hanson makes homemade biscuits, so congratulations to Mrs. Hanson's class. And congratulations to Madame Baldwin's French III student, Meckladeau, and she's been accepted to the very prestigious Governor's French Academy, and she will spend three weeks in full immersion studying French this summer, so very proud of me. And proud of the special education teams from EC Glass High School and Heritage High School, they joined together to plan and host the first annual transition workshop on May 18th. This event was designed to promote awareness of available resources to our family. And on Tuesday, May 16th, Seth Aaron's was recognized for receiving the Bank of the James Award, the Dolan Citizenship Award. He also received a $500 scholarship, so we're very proud of Seth. The tech and baseball teams both ended their seasons in the alternate battles on Wednesday night of this week in their region semifinal games. Although the tennis team is ended for the year, the state tournament for individuals will be next week. And congratulations to the boys across team, they are regional champs. We defeated the local team 10 to 5 to capture the crown, and they will host the semifinals on Wednesday at 6:00. And if we win, we will advance to states, so we're very proud of the boys across team. And congratulations to EC Glass Girls Track Team. We are the 4A state outdoor track champions. And senior Libby Davidson was recognized at the annual All-State Foundation VHSL Achievement Awards Ceremony, and she is the 4A Female Athlete of the Year, so congratulations to Libby. And these are just a list of the upcoming events we have, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me to be the school board rep. It's been fun. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for your, your participation and attendance, and we have a little recognition for, for each of you. This is a resolution of commendation and appreciation to India Page, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Ms. India Page was selected by her peers to represent Heritage High School on the Lynchburg City School Board during the 2016-2017 school year. The Lynchburg City School Board views this desire to serve in public life as the worthiest of ambitions. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board seeks to pay tribute to Ms. India Page, a student who has conscientiously worked to keep the student body's viewpoint before the Lynchburg City School Board. In so doing, she fulfilled her responsibility and made a valuable contribution to public education in this community. Whereas Ms. India Page served Lynchburg City Schools as the Heritage High School student representative to the Lynchburg City School Board from July 2016 until June 2017, and whereas Ms. India Page served as a role model for her peers, excelling as a leader and voice for her school by participating in important school board discussions that directly affect her peers, she achieved high academic success that placed her in the top 15 of her graduating class and plans to continue her education at Lynchburg College. And whereas India Page's attendance at the Lynchburg City School Board meetings demonstrated her commitment to her role as a champion for the best possible educational experience for all students, now therefore, be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia commends Ms. India Page for many valuable contributions in providing the school board with yet another viewpoint for their consideration and guidance. Furthermore, the school board of the city of Lynchburg takes pride in the superior individual who so early in her life has already begun to make her mark by taking such an active part in public life in Lynchburg City, in Lynchburg, Virginia. Need a motion to approve this resolution?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Page, if you could come up and present this to you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And Ms. Marshall, a resolution of commendation and appreciation, you had, had a little bit of help too, to EC Glass High School Student Representatives, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Four students jointly represented EC Glass High School on the Lynchburg City School Board during the 2016-17 school year. The Lynchburg City School Board views this desire to serve in public life as the worthiest of ambitions. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board seeks to pay tribute to Sidney Marshall and her fellow students who worked to keep the student body's viewpoint before the Lynchburg City School Board. Whereas these students served Lynchburg City Schools as EC Glass High School Student Representatives to the Lynchburg City School Board from July 2016 until June 2017, and whereas these students' participation at Lynchburg City School Board meetings demonstrated the school's commitment to its role as a champion for the best possible educational experience for all students, now therefore, be it resolved that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia commends these students for contributions in providing the school board with yet another viewpoint for their consideration and guidance. Furthermore, the school board of the city of Lynchburg takes pride in these individuals who so early in life have already begun to make their mark by taking such an active part in public life in Lynchburg, Virginia. Is there a motion to approve this resolution to Ms. Marshall and co-students, fellow students?
Move to approve.
Move to approve? All in favor? Aye.
Congratulations and thank you. Thank you.
Sidney, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best wishes to our student representatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item G, school board committee reports. I don't know if there are any committees. Dr. Coleman?
I just want to continue to be on the record that the Equity Task Force met last time, and it seems to be a lot of interest around the GPA for student athletes. Of course, it was just a discussion, but it was a very meaningful meeting, and the Equity team just gets better and better.
Another committee? Okay, all right, thank you. That brings us to item H, unfinished business, the school operating budget for 2017-18. That is for action tonight. Dr. Braybrand?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Nellis. The school administration presented the school operating budget for 1617 for its review during our meeting on May 16th. The review included the school board revenue and expenditure adjustments proposed for next year, and I am recommending the school board adopt the school operating budget for 2017-2018.
Okay, and what's the board's pleasure? I don't believe there are any questions that staff received, so if not...
Move to approve the budget?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? No? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Budget is passed. Thank you. Brings us to agenda item I, new business. First is the annual personnel report. That is for action tonight. Dr. Braybrand?
Yes, I am going to, this is a yearly exercise that we do with you all, and I'm going to bring up our great Director Personnel, Ms. Marie G., to review this information with you.
Basically, I was here to answer any questions that you might have, and see if it's a very comprehensive report and a little confusing at times even for me, but if you have any specific questions about it, I'll be happy to answer.
In summary, and maybe just for the help of the general public, this is around our recommendation for continual renewal of contracts, whether they're continuing contracts or whether they're annual contracts for teachers in their first through fifth years. It also has recommendations for grant-funded personnel and also non-renewals. So we wanted you to be able to see this information. If you had questions, please, please direct them to Ms. G., and we'll do our best to try to answer any of them.
Okay, Ms. Morrison?
Thank you. On page 33, a very long packet of information, there was recommended for continuing contracts to remain in force that are title or grant-funded. Is that money there to fund these positions? Have we already received that money, or is this something that's based on money that may come in?
It's there right now. If anything would change, correct, Ms. Dr. McLean? If anything would change, we would know if the budget got eliminated or altered at any time, then we'd go back and look at everything, but as of right now, everything is funded.
But we don't anticipate having any problem with that?
No, we don't. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, that is, this is for action tonight. Is there a motion to approve the annual personnel report?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Brings us to item I two, policy EZF, school nutrition meal account procedures. This is for information tonight with action at the... for information tonight with action at the next meeting on the twentieth. Mr. Beckles, Dr. Braybrand?
Ms. Beckles. I'll have the director of School Nutrition, Beth Morse, present the, what I'll call a summary of the gist of the policy presentation. I'll make a comment after she finishes, and then we'll be opening up for your discussions on the-
Take it away.
On July eighth, 2016, USDA issued a memo requiring all school divisions that operate the National School Lunch Program to have a written and clearly communicated meal charge policy in place no later than July first, 2017, to ensure a consistent and transparent approach to unpaid charges incurred by students who pay the full or reduced price cost of a reimbursable meal. The new policy is required to include information about eligibility and applying for free and reduced price meals, and information about how students who pay the full or reduced cost of a reimbursable meal will be impacted by having insufficient funds to purchase a meal. School divisions are required to communicate the policy to all students and households by the beginning of the 2017-2018 school year and annually thereafter. The drafted LCS policy was reviewed by the school board's Finance Committee on May fourth, and I am presenting the policy to the full school board tonight as information for discussion. Section two of the LCS policy identifies three conditions under which full and reduced price students shall not be denied a meal for failure to pay. Within the first one, within the first thirty operating days of the new school year, two, within the first five consecutive school days following a new student's enrollment, and three, within three consecutive school days following the student's meal account reaching a zero or negative balance. Section three of the LCS policy informs students and families of the availability of free and reduced price meals. Included in section three are eligibility criteria and instructions for applying for free or reduced price meals. Section four of the LCS policy confirms the status of free students as having no need to pay for reimbursable meals. The policy allows full and reduced price students to charge a maximum dollar equivalent of three days' meals. The policy requires that parents or guardians be notified of low and negative account balances at regular intervals. If a student reaches the published charge limit, the LCS policy provides for an alternate or emergency meal that will be offered to the student at no cost to the student. The policy outlines discretionary options that school administration can employ in an effort to collect unpaid meal charges accrued by students in a school year. As federal law prohibits the use of school nutrition funds to pay off uncollected meal charges, the program's annual charge balance must be paid out of the school division's general operating funds or by private sources.
So at the end of the day, really, there's only two options really the board has. Since by USDA regulation, school nutrition program cannot cover unpaid debts, the decision then for the board is somebody must pay. It's either going to be the parents and the students or somebody else. Now, somebody else can be donations, or it can be the operating account. Really, when you boil it down, that's only two options we have.
Colin, the second handout is the situation.
As of this afternoon, when we finish lunch, this is a summary of the charges as they exist today in, by meal status. And the free, the free category, those charges would have been incurred before the student was determined to be eligible for free meals. Students and families can apply throughout the year for meal benefits, and prior to their, the determination being made, they would have incurred these charges. But as you can see, the majority of the negative balance is attributed to our full pay students.
So we'll note that this year we have a balance of eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-three. We also have a balance that was, for last year, about eleven thousand. So for the two years, last year and this year, the total unpaid balance that we have to give back to school nutrition is twenty-two thousand dollars.
And this policy would go into effect as soon as it's passed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there other board questions? Dr. Coleman?
It's evident that every effort to make sure that each student is treated properly has access to food, all of the things that were concerned earlier, it appears that that has been taken care of. And this policy, Mr. Beckles, those two options, I guess either of those options or both of them could certainly be explored, but I, I just want to commend LCS for our efforts. This was brought to us in Finance Committee, and it just is a real diligent effort to do what we need to do. Seems like we need to get to work on the full price folk.
Yes, sir.
I guess I have a question about that, too. Is there, do we know any financial details or other, other information about the full price students that, for why they're not current on the account?
No, sir.
Okay.
This year, we have allowed students to charge without a, an account cap.
Okay.
So to determine the, the status of those students or their families, no, we do not have that information.
Okay. Dr. Coleman?
One last thing. Along with this, and I guess whatever Cindy does, how are we going to make sure that families are aware of when we adopt the policy? Are there going to be any particular efforts to, to make sure that families are aware of the policy adjustment, et cetera?
Our intention, as we did last year, was to have a hard copy meal application that was distributed to all students at the beginning of the school year at the time of registration. This policy would be also included with the application for free and reduced price meals, which by law is required to be distributed to every student the first day of school work. For LCS, it would be during our registration period.
So is it unreasonable to ask the, say, the, these families, the full price families, maybe get, there's an extra effort to reach out, to discern the situation, and make them aware that next year is, it's going to be different?
And we will do that through this communication, through the, with the help of our, with Cindy, and, and that, as well as we do communicate to all students that, whose eligibility carried over for the first thirty operating days of the new school year. As we are approaching that thirty-day cutoff, we reach out to those families to remind them of the need to reapply if indeed they, there's economic circumstances would allow them to be eligible in the current school year.
Okay. All right.
You mentioned discretionary options. Was that in terms of-
Those are outlined in the policy.
Okay. But is that for collecting funds of-
Yes, it would be an attempt to collect, while, while the meal charges are still considered uncollected debt, we can actively pursue collecting those, and the policy does outline some options that administrators could use at their discretion to, in an attempt to try to collect those funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
So we have that option. So have we started to try to implement that?
We have, we have not gone to these measures at this point. I know that my staff has been reaching out to students on their own, but we have not taken it outside of efforts within the school nutrition staff.
Because I know, like, some colleges, if you need to pay up your outstanding balances to take exams or do other things, and going to the free lunch, the free category, there's no way to recoup that money once the application is turned in?
If the, if, if a determination of free eligibility is made in the same claim month that the charges are incurred, we can, can move those claims to the free, to the free category and then, and then eliminate the, the debt, because we will claim at the free rate. And then we, then we wipe the, the charge off of the student's account.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any accumulated data that tells us when the application packages go out? How many actually receive them? How many take them? How many do not take them? What, what type of follow-up is necessary around that, particularly to get after the full price folk? Is there, is there any-
Dr. Coleman, this is, this will be my, the first year that I have been in this position and directed the distribution of the applications, and I worked with April Bruce within the registration process to make sure that an application was in every student's registration packet at each of our school sites.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you. This will come back to us next meeting for, for action. Brings us to Agenda Item I three, Applications for the 2017-2018 Federal Programs. Dr. Braybrand, Dr. McLean?
Dr. McLean?
Yeah, and actually Colin, Mike Rutter.
And this is, these are for information tonight, right, and action for next meeting. Okay.
So good evening, everyone. And stating your agenda report that you received earlier, Lynchburg City Schools will be submitting individual applications for four federal programs for the 2017-2018 academic year. Those programs include Title One Part A, Title One Part D, Title Two Part A, and Title Three. This is an annual requirement for school divisions across the Commonwealth with applications due to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by July the first, 2017. It should be noted tonight that the 2017 allocations that you see in your agenda report reflect our best estimate of funding based on guidance that we have received thus far from the Virginia Department of Education. And while we are required to submit these applications by July the first, the final application, or final allocations for each of the grants does not come on an annual basis until sometime mid to late October. This is a challenge that all school divisions across the Commonwealth face in preparing applications and budgets until final allocations are indeed come forth. I want to also provide clarity for board members tonight that regarding the use of the federal funds, the law is very clear that federal funds are to be used to supplement state and local dollars, and in no way can be used to supplant state and local funds. Said another way, school divisions may not replace local and state funds with federal dollars, but should use federal dollars to provide additional and allowable personnel programs and services that otherwise would not be provided. And in addition, federal funds may not be used to support personnel programs or services that are required through state code and the standards of quality. For Title One Part A, it provides financial assistance through state educational agencies to school divisions and public schools with high numbers of percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic content and achievement standards. The program in Title One A prioritizes excellence and equity, recognizes the importance of supporting teachers and students, and provides supplemental human resources, professional development, meaningful family engagement, and high-quality instructional materials designed to assist all students with the mastery of college and career readiness standards in reading and mathematics, and the attainment of proficiency or better on corresponding assessments. Title One Part D funds are used to support prevention and intervention services for neglected, delinquent, or at-risk students. The overarching goal for the use of these funds is to improve the educational services for children and youth in local and state institutions for neglected or delinquent children and youth, so that such children and youth have the opportunity to meet the same challenging state standards that all children in the state are expected to meet. For Title Two Part A, this program provides federal funding to states and districts for activities that strengthen instructional leadership and teacher quality in all schools. Funding can be used to support a wide array of activities, including interventions for teacher professional development, so long as the activities are grounded in scientifically based research. Because communities nationwide face such a variety of needs when it comes to teacher quality, the law gives schools and districts flexibility in how the money is spent. It also holds school divisions accountable for the proper and effective use of the funds, so in LCS, Title Two Part A, funds provide supplemental services and human resources to ensure that all students in our school division are taught by a fully licensed, properly endorsed, and effective teacher. And so to this end, the majority of Title Two Part A funds are used to support salaries and benefits for instructional coaches. The division is investing in these positions because of the tremendous potential for these coaches to provide embedded professional development for all staff, provide content-specific support to teachers in all content areas, work with professional learning communities to support instruction, and provide support in the development and retention of new teachers to Lynchburg City Schools. Federal funds that are awarded under Title Three are used to support English language learners in achieving proficiency with challenging academic standards, focusing on the acquisition of proficiency with listening, speaking, reading, and writing the English language. Grant funds are also used to promote parent engagement in the educational process of their children. For 2017-18, Lynchburg City Schools, as I've already indicated, we're anticipating leveled funding for all federal programs except for, as you can see in your agenda report, Title Two Part A. You can see that we are anticipating some additional funding in Title Two Part A this year. So while there is an increase in the overall Title Two funding that's coming to our division, there have been changes to the formula for allocating funds for equitable services to private schools in our, in our city. That calculation change has actually caused an overall increase to the Title Two funds allocated to the private schools. So in effect, there is a net reduction of available funds for LCS and implementing services under Title Two A. But I am very happy to inform you that we are able to, using Title One funds, we are able to continue all of the services that we have been providing under Title Two A by, by braiding and blending funding from our Title One program. That's, that's for 2017-18. Since Title One A is by far our largest grant, we also wanted to take an opportunity this evening to highlight the impact of Title One funds on our eligible schools. We want to remind the board that in Lynchburg, funding is allocated to ten of our eleven elementary schools. As in the case with the majority of school divisions, Lynchburg does not allocate Title One funds to secondary schools. In order to be eligible, the poverty rate at an individual school must be at least thirty-five percent. So the one school that does not reach that poverty threshold is Bedford Hills. That's, that's why we only serve ten out of eleven of our elementary schools. So for those ten elementary schools that are eligible, the funds that are received under Title One A support some things such as literacy teachers and literacy coaches, math teachers, instructional assistants, partial support for the lead instructional coaches in elementary schools. I just mentioned, we, we upped that a little bit this year to cover our, our overall net reduction in Title Two A. We cover teachers and teachers' instructional assistance for two pre-K classes in our school division. We fund social workers, positive behavior intervention specialists. New to this year, at one of our schools, we will have a family engagement liaison. New to this year, at one of our schools, we will have a family engagement liaison. New this year also, set aside funds to support services for neglected and delinquent children in addition to the funds that we receive from Title I D. We're also happy to, to report, to Ms. Morrison's question a few moments ago, that our, our federal programs are, have been able to, we've been able to do the budgets so that we can support the salary and benefits increases for all of our employees that are funded through federal dollars. We also provide supplemental instructional materials and family engagement activities through Title I. As previously mentioned, applications are due to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education on or before July the first, 2017, and it does require our school board approval prior to being submitted. Therefore, we will bring this item back to the school board at its next meeting for approval prior to submitting to, to VDOE. While you have draft copies of the four applications and we're not anticipating additional changes, there could be some, some additional minor changes that we would have to make to the budget detail. An example would be if we are currently funding a particular individual, that individual decides to leave our school division, we hire a new individual at a different cost, then that budget would have to have, show, show that adjustment so that we do submit a balanced budget to the Virginia Department of Education. Before entertaining questions regarding our federal programs this evening, I, I would be remiss and would like to take an opportunity to, to call attention to Ms. Kristy Compton. She is in the back, back here. Kristy is our coordinator for federal grants. She spends many, 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 many hours working on these grants to get them in a, in a format that we can send them to the Department of Ed and they are in approvable format. She works with our finance department, members of our Office of Student Services and Exceptional Children, Dr. McLean and myself. And I just want to give her a little shout-out this evening for all the great work that she has done in helping us to prepare the budgets for your, for your review and approval. In addition to Dr. McLean and Ms. Compton and myself, we also have tonight Mr. Willis Vanderworker and Ms. Pam Thomas who lead the charge in our Title III program, and they will be here to help answer questions about Title III, should you have them. And Ms. Latony Brown is here this evening also, as she works directly with the administration of the Title I D federal programs. So at this time, we'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Are there board member questions or comments? Dr. Coleman?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I have not recalled getting all of this in the past and probably did, but I, I got it. I got this. Mr. Rub, this is a lot of work. And one of the things that I'm doing as I've reviewed our previous budgets and to look at the nice breakout that is provided for us of all of the grant-funded pieces that we do, I'm not sure that our community is aware of everything that LCS is providing, the robust efforts at dealing with the Title I, Title II Part A, and the Title III Part A pieces. Once all of this gets approved, and I trust that it will, and we continue to do what we're doing, this even deals with making sure that PBIS can be effective, which seems to be a concern of some of our community. How are we going to help our community to know? Anybody just sitting around saying, well, we're not dealing with at-risk people. We're not, we don't have this and we don't have that. When I look at all of those programs, Madam Vice Chair, it's amazing. I'm not sure that the community knows, and once all of this gets approved, what do we do to help people to tap in where, where possible?
It's a great question. Each of our, each of our schools, as well as our school division, is required to have a family involvement policy, a family engagement policy now. Our schools work directly with our families. They have, they have members of their family communities serving on their school improvement teams that help develop the things that they need at individual schools. We do post these, these are already posted on our website for review by the public. Those are things that we have done. We certainly have room for improvement of doing more to help our community understand how we, how we do appropriate federal dollars.
Well, that's important because it's robust. I mean, it's a lot, a whole lot about every, a whole bunch of things.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that people are aware of it.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Senna?
I noticed down here, it makes sense, there are a lot of places where it says no changes.
Yes, a great question.
So for, for us, just reading this for the first time, like me, a new school board member, is there a way we can, just for our own knowledge and for spreading the word, get some of that background without generating a lot of paper and adding a lot of work for you?
Sure. That is a great question. Because of the passing of ESSA, the State Department of Education was very late in getting out its applications for federal programs this year. So they have provided us a one-time waiver for doing the program details. That was to help school divisions across the Commonwealth be able to submit the federal applications in a timely manner. So if there were, if, so if our budget details, our budget summaries, all of our program details, if there were no changes to those, then we were able to say no changes and the State Department has last year's application that they would go from. You will notice in your application that there are a change or two. You will see a little bit of narrative and that because, that's because there were a few minor changes to our programs. But we can certainly provide you with the 1617 program narratives for your review.
Thank you.
It's easy to do.
Thanks.
Dr. Coleman?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this may be for Dr. Bray-Brian. With the grants, July I, and, and, and I guess you know at a certain time, and we continue to do what we do, with unfunded mandates, the, the burden that we have, these grants, I'm sure, help some. With all of my nice statements, is, once we get all of this, is this enough to deal?
No. No. And the biggest part is IDEA. IDEA is the legislation around special needs kids. We get eighteen cents on the dollar per services we have to deliver to kids. You've seen that information, I know, that Mr. Beckel shared months ago about the shift in cost that is going for those kids from federal to local, and it is still one of the issues. We have kids with increasing complex needs. We have to meet them by federal law, and the, the federal government is not giving us. The law says forty percent of the cost shall be borne by the federal government, and we're, we're going at about eighteen cents on the dollar. So that is still an issue. We're glad that our Title I, which is dollars toward needy schools of, of kids from all backgrounds, general ed and special ed, and that's used for additional teachers. I mean, there's a whole list of things that's in here. Additional teachers, reading teachers, instructional coaches, but no, it is, it's not enough. And honestly, Congress is to be re-authorizing IDEA in this session, and I hope that we see some leadership around addressing this issue. Special need students and their needs are not being completely met, and the money to do that is being borne by local school divisions.
All right. There's no more questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thorough job as usual. Brings us to Item I four, Educational Broadband Lease. Mr. Beckels or Dr. Bray-Brian?
Mr. Beckels?
Um, for this, for this presentation, I'll ask David Chin Russo come and make the presentation to the board and, so we both can answer any questions you may have after his presentation.
Good evening. It's not very often that someone comes before the board to tell you about an opportunity that the board is, the school system's going to make money. Most of the time, people come here asking for money. The educational broadband system was established actually in the 1960s. And Lynchburg City Schools actually went into, signed, went into a lease agreement with Charlottesville Cable in, I think, 1992. And that was our first attempt at working with a provider that was going to provide wireless cable TV to our schools for educational purposes. Unfortunately, that never really materialized. Charlottesville Cable was never really able, and many of the providers were never able to provide those services. Since that time, the FCC has re-categorized that technology, and the spectrum that we own, Lynchburg City Schools owns it. Actually, who has cellphones here today? Okay. So this technology is what drives your cellphones. It is the wireless signal that your cellphones use. You talk about 4G technology. That is a spectrum that Lynchburg City Schools owns. And so we have actually still been in contract with the, Entellus purchased Charlottesville Cable. So when Entellus purchased Charlottesville Cable, the contract that we had in place with them continued on. In the, what, a year ago, Chantel purchased Entellus. So we have had this ongoing contract for our spectrum. We were originally getting for the spectrum. And under the direction of Mr. Copeland, we concluded, as we looked at this old contract from the 1990s, that Lynchburg City Schools was not getting their fair share. So we then started to renegotiate this contract with Chantel and Sprint. And that's what you have before you today. So Chantel, as I said, purchased Entellus, with whom we already had a contract in place, but we decided to renegotiate this contract because we weren't getting our fair share. And just to kind of give you some, some, some of the numbers, we were originally getting okay, that's peanuts. Our new contract, on top of that, we're also getting from Sprint slash ClearWire Communications. And so you can see that's a huge benefit for the school division. It's an opportunity for us to increase our income that goes, these funds go to the general fund because they're not designated for any specific purposes. And so that gives us an increase to our general fund. So this contract is essentially a update of a existing contract that the school division has had since 1992, except it's changed hands as different companies have purchased the original company.
Okay. Thank you. Question, and this, this comes to us for, this will come to us for action at our next meeting on the twentieth. Dr. Dolenzel?
So, um, the last contract was how many years? Twenty, twenty-five years?
Uh, the last contract, it was indefinite. It was, um, so the contract that was signed in 1992 was renewable by them every year.
Okay. But now we're committing to thirty years?
We're committing to a thirty-year contract. And that's the standard, the industry standard. We tried to negotiate some, some different breakout points for that contract, but it's the industry standard and they weren't going to change.
But, um, so there, there isn't any point for reevaluation, like should market conditions change? And thirty years is just such a long, long time.
Yeah. Well, again, so the benefit of this one is, is that at least now we do have a thirty-year mark that ends it, and the original contract that was signed in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-two, they had absolutely no reason to really come back and negotiate with us. They really did this in good faith. And so we worked with an attorney from DC who advised Nora, Mr. Beckels, and myself along this process, and we really feel like this is the best contract that we could get.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments? Okay. So this will come to us next meeting for, for action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to Agenda Item I five, Regional Alternative Education Program for 2017-18. That is for action tonight. Dr. Uh, Dr. McLean?
Yes, it is that time of year where we have a variety of the different grant fund programs coming to you for review and approval. And Latony Brown can walk us through this one and be available for the next one as well.
Good afternoon. The Regional Alternative Education Program is housed at Fort Hill Community School. The program encompasses the middle school program, the teachers, the tutors, and the coordinator of Fort Hill Community School. It's a regional program that provides services to Appomattox, Bedford, Nelson County, and Amherst County schools. Each year, we provide goals to the state and we give them our results in terms of progress for each of these students. This program was established to provide a safe haven for students that are experiencing behavioral challenges, academic challenges, and it's grown in terms of the services that we've provided to the students. This year, we added day treatment services on-site. A social worker also visits, visits the site regularly to assist the students with their needs or concerns. This grant is level funding. It's been the same for the last three years. The total requested is three hundred and seventeen thousand and fifty-three dollars, and we receive that amount every single year.
Board member questions or comments? I guess I have a question on what sets the level of funding. I mean, if we've had level funding for three years?
For each student, the state gives us a certain amount, and each locality have a slotted number of students, and you can trade out spots for those students. And so it's based upon the number of students served.
So the, the amount here is the total for state funding, and that's for the, for the whole, the tire operation of Fort Hill?
For the middle school program only.
No? Okay. Only for middle school?
Yes. So you concerned about the, where do we pull the cost for the high school students at Fort Hill?
Well, I'm just, I'm reading the, the, so the, the first sentence is the Regional Alternative Edge Program talks about middle and high school.
Right. And those high school students are the ones from the counties, and some of the teachers do teach the high schools, so it does encompass some of the high school students. Excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Carter?
So the middle school students are coming from?
They're coming from Lynchburg, too, Amherst, Nelson, Bedford, Appomattox.
Do they pay tuition for the students to come? The other school divisions pick up the cost?
No, the state provides the cost per, the cost, right.
But we provide the building, location, all of the other things that?
Yes, and they provide their own transportation to the site.
So the expenses of this program are covered entirely by the state?
Yes.
So this is for action tonight? Is that correct?
Yes.
Move to approve, as presented?
Second.
Your second. It's been moved in second to approve the Regional Alternative Education Program for 2017-18. Is there any additional discussion, comments? Okay. Ms. Carter?
I was so confused. Is this the same Fort Hills community?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. And so we have a four-day middle school program there. And that four-day middle school program, you have a certain number of slots for Appomattox, Bedford, Nelson, and Lynchburg, and those students attend the school all day.
Are you ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. So now we are with Item I six, Individual Student Alternative Education Plan for 2017-18. Dr. McLean?
And, again, to Ms. Brown, this is another one that we receive state funding to support.
The asset program is the The Asset Program is the Individualized Student Alternative Education Plan, better known as RODEO. It's housed at the Amelia Prize Building, and the purpose is to provide educational services for students 16 through 18 that would have otherwise maybe dropped out through obtaining a GED. The students complete Career Technical and Educational Program hours, 10 a week, and they study for their GED until they pass the GED. The funding for this has been the same, again, for the last three years at $23,576. And I have worked with Mr. Beckles to cover the operational cost for some of this, for one of the staff members that's associated with this budget.
Okay, so this is for Action tonight? Are there board member questions or comments?
I move to approve as presented?
Been moved in second to approve the Internet Individual Student Alternative Education Plan for 2017-18. Any additional questions? Okay, great. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Brings us to Item I-7, Authorization of Signature. Dr. Braybrand?
Yes, Dr. Nillis, the Virginia Department of Ed requires the school division to identify an individual who in the absence of the superintendent has authorization to sign all Virginia Department of Education correspondence, reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence. I recommend that the school board authorize Ms. Wendy L. Sullivan, School Board Clerk, to fulfill the necessary signature obligations in the absence of the superintendent. Many of the matters associated with the delegation's authority tend to be financial and operational in nature. I ask for your action this evening.
Hardly, I'm so moved.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the authorization for signature. Are there additional questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, I guess I need to sign this, too. That brings us to Item J, Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. Several things, we have Hill City Hoops getting ready to start. It's going to be starting June 17th at Miller Park. School Nutrition is actually going to be providing the food for Hill City Hoops, so we're excited about that food outreach. It will be on Tuesdays and Saturdays from 6:00 to 10:00. We've been putting out the word to have many of our Lynchburg City Schools employees volunteer to come out and help, support the event, and we hope that many of you will be able to go out this summer and see our young people spending time out on the court. Remember, the Miller Park courts are now lighted through cooperation with Parks and Rec, so we've got a great new opportunity for our young people, and we're doing our best to play a role with those kids over the summer. I wanted to let the school board know that former school board member Harry Smith, who served admirably on this school board, passed away earlier this week. We're still waiting for funeral arrangements, and we'll certainly share that with school board members, but please keep the Smith family in your thoughts and prayers, and we honor his service to the Lynchburg City Schools and school board. I also say with a heavy heart that we have had a tough week the last, the last week. We lost a few employees, Ms. Lipscomb from Laurel Regional Center, Ms. Ferguson from Hutcheson, Ms. Abbott from Perrymount Elementary, and we keep those employees and their families in our, in our prayers and thoughts. It is an honor to let you know that we are welcoming our new Director of Transportation, Mr. Russell Stone, on Thursday is his first official day. We're excited. All issues around transportation will be fully resolved on Friday, and, sorry, that was Copeland.
That's the plan, anyway.
That's the plan, but we're excited, and I want to thank Mr. Copeland and Ms. G for putting together an amazing cookout just a few weeks ago, a great surprise for our folks over in transportation, to get a chance to informally get to meet Mr. Stone, who himself is a former bus driver and was the number two in transportation in Allegheny County. We're sorry for him having to leave Allegheny County, but we're certainly excited to have him in Lynchburg City Schools, and we know he's going to provide amazing leadership. We also have our staff appreciation tomorrow night at EC Glass, 6 o'clock. This has become a annual tradition. When I arrived here, this was something you had to pay to actually go to celebrate folks who were receiving their retirement and service anniversaries. We also acknowledge and celebrate our Teachers of the Year and Support Employees of the Year. I do want to make a note to folks, and I shared it with the division today, the lacrosse team, as you saw, is in the state semifinals. We could not have predicted that. It's a home field advantage, which we're certainly not going to interfere with. So, there will be overflow parking at the plaza, and we will have a school bus transportation from the GLT spot there over to the auditorium for those folks going to staff appreciation, but we hope many of you will be able to make it out for that. The Project Search, which is a collaboration that we've done with CENTRA that we started last year and with Campbell County Public Schools, is going to have their graduation on Thursday, June 8th at 4:00 PM. I really want to applaud Mr. Vanderworker and Amanda Myers Ramirez for getting that to happen, and for CENTRA to take a leading role in getting our special needs kids ready for career opportunities. Very, very excited for them. Many of these kids are graduating with immediate employee opportunities here in the Lynchburg City area. We also have Empowerment Academy on June 12th at 6:00 PM. I believe board members received an actual personal invitation tonight. That will be at Heritage High School in the Forum, and we hope many of you will be able to come out for that as well. The Citizens Academy, which is a wonderful thing the City of Lynchburg does every year, we had the opportunity to present yesterday. The results are already in. We had Ms. Brown present on our efforts around PBIS, Ms. Morse on our food and nutrition initiatives, and I presented on the comprehensive plan, and our feedback was very, very positive, especially of Ms. Brown and Ms. Morse, so I thank them for their time for that. The Year of Champions continues. As you noted, our girls EC Glass track team got their fifth ring as state champions over the last two years, an amazing opportunity for them. As I've already mentioned, the boys lacrosse team at Glass is in the state semifinals, and just as a reminder, you may have seen, the, if they win tomorrow, they would be playing Saturday at 1:00. If we had graduation on our Saturdays, our kids on the lacrosse team, if they were playing in the state championship, would not be able to attend that game and also graduation. So, one of the benefits of having our Sunday graduation is we don't have our athletic competitions create a Sophie's Choice for our young people. I'm also delighted to let you know that our online summer school enrollment is soaring to new heights. We've had almost, I think, double the enrollment for our online PE courses and also our personal financial management courses. Both of these online opportunities allow our high school students to have additional opportunities to pursue electives, and we have so many wonderful electives to choose Finally, I would just say that around this time, six years ago, I was sitting out by the Chesapeake Bay, believe it or not, and there was a message sent to me that there was going to be an opening in Lynchburg City Schools. I didn't know anything about Lynchburg City Schools, and I was, I was only in my second year as an Assistant Superintendent, and I saw it and deleted it and moved on, and my wife at the time said, no school system's going to be looking for somebody with only two years under his belt. Later in that fall, a search firm was hired, and ironically, both of those members were former deputy superintendents in Fairfax County Schools, and they called me late one evening and said, it's time for you to leave your Fairfax family and take a look at the Lynchburg family. It was hard. It was hard to leave in. I had spent almost 20 years in that family, but they convinced me, it's time to go and grow, Scott, and you need to go look and go to a different place and share your skills and share your work, your life's work around education. I was nervous at the time, and I can't say that my family was quite happy then for me to, to make this decision. My wife already had a job there, and my, my boys were doing well in school, but they took a leap of faith and said, Dad must have some idea of what he's doing. And I came here five years ago, and I've loved every minute of it. I've loved the Lynchburg family, I felt embraced, and I feel like we have really put a framework and success in this school system. There's still a lot to do, trust me, but there's going to be a lot to do every day in public education. That's just the reality of the world that we're in. Some of the comments mentioned tonight about teacher pay, I don't disagree with. We still do not pay our teachers enough, but I would like to remind this board and community that in the five years before I came, we didn't pay our employees here one additional dollar or raise for five straight years. We've been able to provide compensation increases every year since I arrived, and here this year for next year partially. We still have issues around discipline, which were here in force when I arrived, but we moved forward and signed an agreement with the Office of Civil Rights and began revamping our discipline policies, completely revamping them, doing things differently and doing training to help kids get better. We've made real progress, we have more to do, and there will always be more to do. But I do believe in my heart, I've left this place better. And in the end, I think that's the true test of leadership. I'll miss it, I'll miss you, but it is hard to resist not going back home and finishing my career where I started it. I had one student who emailed me just three days ago, he's 41 years old, he's got two kids, I was his teacher the very first year of my teaching, and he said, I'm so excited that you're going to be able to have my family be a part of the experience that I got to have when I was your teacher. So, I think we're all in this business, we're teachers forever, we're educators forever, and Lynchburg will always be in my heart. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Board member comments? Dr. Senna?
I had a really nice meeting with Dr. McLean to review some information and, and things related to the school district, and I was really appreciative of his hospitality and Dr. Braybrand for helping facilitate that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Combs? Ms. Carter?
Oh, I just want to thank our staff, Lynchburg City Schools. Virginia University of Lynchburg has a fast-track program for kids who probably wouldn't be able to go to college anywhere else or have the opportunity to gain college credit and then be able to transfer where we may have an articulation agreement with schools like Liberty, et cetera. And our staff was so supportive of coming to learn how LCS can help where necessary to ensure that once our kids graduate from high school, that they are placed, every one of them can be placed where necessary. And so, Glass and Heritage, Empowerment Academy, Fort Hill, I want to thank Latonya Brown for how she was able to reach out to other support individuals that deal with kids that may be in the situation in which that program is designed for. Those are the creative ways that we can be able to make sure that our young people are best served even as they move towards graduation. I've gotten around to Fort Hill to follow up with students who've come through us for discipline matters, Heritage Elementary's promotion, RODEO, Amelia Prize graduation. I attended the Laurel Regional Program graduation yesterday because I had never participated in one, and it was so moving to participate in that on yesterday. The Lincoln Middle, Professor Lefele Young Men's Program, and so, it's just so many wonderful things that are going on since our superintendent has been here in Lynchburg.
Thank you. Board member comments? Dr. Dolenzel?
Well, it was six years ago on this board, when the board members around this table had to make a decision about where to go next, and we were flummoxed about what direction to take. Would we hire a search firm? Would we just post an ad here or there, see what, who came to our doors? And we ended up hiring a search firm who did an amazing job of engaging the community in determining, what does the community want to see in a superintendent? I mean, the most important job that a board can do is to hire a superintendent. This, a board hires a superintendent is charting the course for however many future years under the leadership of the superintendent, and the board at the time decided, you know, we need to hear what the community thinks. It's our responsibility to hire a superintendent, but let's hear what the community thinks. And this search firm went out and had community forums, met with administration, people in administration, to ask them about their experience with a superintendent, what kind of a superintendent would they need. And the search firm that found Dr. Braybrand had also brought to us a number of other highly qualified candidates, highly qualified candidates, and the board spent many, many, many hours. You all need to buckle your seat belts and put, you know, get your families on board now, because this is the most important thing you'll do. Well, I am so grateful that we, even though we took some heat at the time for hiring a national search firm, if we hadn't, I don't know that Dr. Braybrand would have ever known about this opportunity. He interviewed with us, and in his interview, Dr. Braybrand presented a 100-day plan in his interview.
Wow.
He had done such in-depth research about our district that he knew, without anyone telling him, where some of our immediate needs were, and he had a 100-day plan to start to get things moving. You can imagine that at that time, the people around the table were a little bit stunned by this fast-talking, highly energetic man that had an accent that was a little unfamiliar. But, in the end, it was Dr. Braybrand who won this board over, and for five years, you told, I think I was the one who asked you, look, you're clearly someone who's going places. How long would you commit to staying in Lynchburg? And you said five years, hopefully more, if it all works out between us, but I promise I won't go anywhere for five years. Now, that was a big commitment. He never, he didn't know what this was going to be like. I can guarantee you, he found many surprises waiting for him, because the board had surprises that they found as well. And he handled it. He didn't go out looking for a position, he was recruited, and I have the ultimate respect for you for staying, you know, maintaining your commitment to your five years, and while it pains me to see you go, because you've really gotten us on a great track, I understand the need to go home, and I respect that and wish you the best.
I guess I'll close the board comments with, obviously, the superintendent, oh, sorry, Ms. Carter.
I just wanted to say that in my brief time on the board, I really have appreciated the structures you've put in place, the practices you're implementing, and you standing behind your mission, every child by name, by need, and also, you know, the salaries that you've tried to, that you've increased, not tried, and to get some of the staff at market rate for their pay, and just again, for your reputation in the Virginia State. And why you're leaving so quickly, I don't know, but I'm glad for you, and that was from Marie, but I'm glad for you, and also, I never want to stay, stand in, in the way of someone's making another step, and that's a big step, and I wish you well, and we need to make sure that we're going to get someone that's going to continue what you've started. And also, your willingness to look at some of the difficult things regarding, like the volunteer policy and some of the other things that you've had to look into, and we really do appreciate you and all that you've done.
Obviously, the- Okay. Obviously, the search look, the effort to find a replacement for Dr. Braybrand is going to be a major focus, probably the number one focus for the board coming up here. I guess I caution the community regardless of how qualified an individual we find to replace him is there's only one, Dr. Braybrand. Especially this year, being board chair, having more interactions with, with Dr. Braybrand. It's, I appreciate his dedication, his energy, the commitment to all the students in the city of Lynchburg, the parents, and the staff. You know, we're publicly funded, Virginia. During my time on the board, it's pretty clear the state of Virginia does a pretty poor job of funding public education. There's a lot of unfunded mandates, expectations. They set standards but don't provide funding for any school division to meet the standard. Might have to have a conference call with local state representatives about this, but it's an issue that we will always, always be struggling with. Fortunately, Dr. Braybrand has worked on communication and relationship with, with the city. That's definitely improved. The city's been able to provide additional resources that have supported some staff increases, staff salary increases. We'd like to do more. It's going to be a struggle. But, and Dr. Braybrand does have one more meeting, so we'll all get another shot at him again. But I would like to say, I really appreciate his time and effort. He's sincere and committed public educator. We're not going to be able to find another Dr. Braybrand, but we will certainly do our best to find an extremely highly qualified, competent, qualified candidate to carry on.
Thank you.
Public education. Okay. A few informational items. The Fort Hill Community School graduation is tomorrow at noon in the cafeteria. Heritage High School's graduation, this is in the air-conditioned field house, is June 11th, that's Sunday at 8:30 in the morning. And EC Glass High School graduation is in the auditorium, June 11th at 3:00 PM. The next board meeting is Tuesday, June 20th at 5:30. And, Dr. Coleman?
Dr. Nellis, if you could just inform us at some point about the attire for the EC Glass graduation and let us know what, what your preference is, because sometimes persons aren't always aware of which way to go with robes.
Well, we'll find out what the dress code is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We do need to go into, enter into a closed meeting at this point. So pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters, personnel matters. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move to close.
Second. Been moved and seconded to go into closed meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We are in closed meeting. Thank you.